All right, well, good evening and welcome to the May 22 Planning Commission meeting. Call to order.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson.
President.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Nemraff.
Here.
Commissioner Manglik.
Here.
Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the meeting agenda. Does anybody have any amendments to the agenda? And if not...
I'll move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from the March 8, 2019 Planning Commission. Were there any comments to those? Commissioner Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a few edits. So on page one at the bottom, under Community Comment, John Hamilton addressed the Planning Commission period and strike with his concerns regarding the comp plan. On page six at the bottom, under Motion, Commissioner Lee moved approval of the rezoning as proposed with two additions. I'd like to strike to take a further look at the connection and try. That's it. So basically, it's going to read Commissioner Lee moved approval of the rezoning as proposed with two additions to get the connection accomplished as part of the rezoning to occur after the approval of the comp plan and to encourage the applicant to take a further look at the color palette. I rewatched the meeting and we had an extensive discussion and that was the very final wording, but during the discussion, we established that, so...
I'll move approval of the minutes as amended.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So next is Community Comment, and at this time, anyone from the community can come up and speak for three minutes on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak? Hearing none. I don't think we have to close, right? We don't have to... So, moving on from that. But I think I was going to take this time to, right after the Community Comment, to read a statement. Okay. So, this is a statement that was put together, created by the city in regards to John Commissioner Hamilton's comments at the Community Comment last, at the May 8 meeting. So I'm just going to read this statement. "At the May 8 Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner John Hamilton spoke under, excuse me, Community Comment and left the meeting. During his remarks, he made disparaging comments about a fellow commissioner, a member of the City Council, and another resident. The comments were not in alignment with the Planning Commission bylaws, which include a section on respectable behavior. As a result, Mayor Jim Hovland asked for Mr. Hamilton's resignation, which he submitted May 15. The City Council at its meeting May 21 will discuss how to fill the remainder of Mr. Hamilton's term on the Planning Commission, which goes through March 1, 2022. The City of Edina appreciates Mr. Hamilton's three years of dedicated service to the Planning Commission, but insists on conducting meetings in which all elected and appointed officials, employees, residents, and other visitors feel welcome." So that's the statement. And, you know, just to add to that, I just... That was a sad, you know, hard comment to hear, but it's also just a kind of an opportunity for all of us to remember to be respectful to all and allow all to speak, you know, within all the commissions, on the council, and throughout the public. And again, we do see, there's a lot of emotions right now with the comp plan and everything that we've been looking at, but we see a lot of this happening from all sides on social media and such, and it's just a good reminder for everyone to respect everyone's opinions. So, did anyone else have anything you'd like to add? Okay. So... I lost my agenda. Thanks. Okay, we've got three public hearings. Thanks, I found it. Oh, sorry, just got you a pen. The first one is a public hearing at 4604 Browndale Avenue.
All right. The property, 4604 Browndale Avenue, is located on the west side of Browndale, south of Bridge Street, and north of Edgebrook Place, and east of Minnehaha Creek. It consists of a two-story home with an attached front-loading garage. The home is located within the Country Club District and was built in 1925 and is considered a pivotal design within the Country Club District. The applicant has received a variance allowing the back wall of an addition to 4604 Browndale Avenue to be built within the required setback of Minnehaha Creek and with an alternate setback standard that exceeds the allowable 200 square feet of encroachment in 2018. The applicant has made a few changes to the project that requires an updated variance application. It also required an updated certificate of appropriateness through the Heritage Preservation Commission. Generally, the project is similar to what was approved in 2018 with the exception of an additional two areas of encroachment within the required 50-foot ordinary high-water mark. The staff report also discusses a frontyard setback variance, but without the stairs included in that square footage, the porch is under 80 square feet, which then complies with the zoning ordinance. So like I said, the applicant was required to receive an updated certificate of appropriateness through the Heritage Preservation Commission for changes to the front facade. The Heritage Preservation Commission reviewed the updated COA last week on the 14th and approved the COA for changes that were made to the front facade and the southeast corner of the house. So this is the survey for the site plan that was submitted in 2018 that shows what was approved and shows the ordinary high-water levels and the 50-foot required setback. The areas in yellow were areas that were encroachment that were added. Tonight, the request still includes most of those, or those encroachments that were included in the request in 2018, but the highlighted yellow areas are what is new with this request. So the areas in pink here on this survey are what is new, and then the areas in red are the two areas that are additional encroachment within the 50-foot setback. As you can see, the home used to have an existing sideyard garage, or side-load garage. In the '50s, there was an addition that was put onto the home that converted the garage to a front-loading garage, and the applicant is requesting or proposing that to reposition the garage back to a side-load garage, which is similar to what was, or the same as what was approved in 2018. Here are existing homes as the, or existing elevations as the home exists today. You can see the front-load garage. Here is what was, the elevations that were approved in 2018 with the variance request. And then, these are the two areas that the Heritage Preservation, or this is the area that the Heritage Preservation Commission approved with their certificate of appropriateness. There is an additional bump out to the front facade, which changed the front elevation as well as the south elevation. And then, to the right, the circle is also an area that has additional square footage that was added within that front yard, or within that 50-foot setback required. Tonight, there are practical difficulties designing for the existing home and its present location and condition on a shallow lot with non-conforming setbacks that are currently existing from Minnehaha Creek. The owners have done an admirable job of keeping the integrity of the existing home while addressing space and tight setback area for updates. The plan has been before the Heritage Preservation Commission, who supports the project. The circumstances are unique to this property. The property is shallow and has non-conforming setbacks to the creek today. Remodeling and adding on to the existing home can be a challenge, but the homeowner has strived to maintain the historic look of the home. And the proposed variance and home addition and remodel were specifically designed to maintain the essential character of the Country Club neighborhood. The design and materials will match the original structure, and they have reverted back to the side-load garage. Tonight, staff recommends approval of a variance from the alternate setback standard with the findings that are outlined in the staff report. And I also would like to add that additional conditions that were not included, so I apologize for that, just subject to the plans presented and subject to the conditions listed in the engineering memo. And with that, I can take any questions.
And if are there any questions, Emily? Commissioner Nemraff?
Thank you, Emily. Very, very nice presentation. The graphics you provided are very good, too. Engineering, the engineering department has reviewed this.
Yes.
Can you confirm again, has the engineering water coordinator, is that part of the review process?
The Water Resources Manager?
Yes.
She did not review, or her name is not on the engineering memo, but I believe if they would have concerns, they would discuss that amongst the engineering department.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
A quick clarification question. When you talked about the porch, can you just point out what part are you talking about?
So with this application in front of you, that was different from the previous application. The previous application that was in front of the Planning Commission last year just had the stairs essentially with a landing. The applicant has wished or decided to add on a larger front porch, it's unenclosed area. It's under 80 square feet without the stairs, and with the zoning ordinance, how we apply it, we would not include the stairs within those 80 square feet. So they're under that 80 square feet to encroach within, into the frontyard setback.
Okay.
Does that...
Wasn't there an issue with the porch?
So in the staff report, but it was clarified since then that that calculation included the stairs.
Okay.
And we would not include the stairs in our...
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, that's okay.
Thank you.
So Emily, again with this graphic, so what is new? So the darker highlighted yellow is what's new this year, this time?
Yep, what's new with this application. And then, in this graphic, the pink is what's new, and then I just tried to highlight in red the additional areas of encroachment within that 50-foot setback.
Okay.
And I believe the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions as well.
Right, sure. Would you like to speak, the applicant?
Hi, I'm Sarah Nemo with Ray Campbell, Larkston Architects, representing the homeowner. So just wanted to point out that this is a refinement, design is an iterative process, and knowing that we had to go through the HPC and the Planning Commission to really give legs to this project, we were here in 2018 to really get the green light to go. And over the last year, we've really been refining this design, and this is where we've ended up, so we wanted to bring it back to you to just get the final approval, so...
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
Move to close a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So bringing it back to the Planning Commission for discussion, any comments?
Yeah, just quick, I mean, compared to last year, not much has changed, and this is a great project. We agreed to it. Changes are very minimal, and I'd argue they enhance the character of the neighborhood as well as the house. I have no issues in support of this fully.
I would second that. I think that on the back, the two things that I would be worried about would be water issues on a high-water level and then visibility from the neighbors as they look down the creek. And given the diagram, it doesn't look like either of those are going to be at all affected, so I would have no issues with this either.
Great, is there a... Commissioner Nemraff?
Yeah, this looks like a beautiful project. The feedback we've received from neighbors seem to be positive. The one concern I have, which isn't going to affect my vote, because I will support this, but I am worried that as we encroach on these waterway setbacks, that people five, 10 years from now are going to say, "Why did the city let people get, build close to the water?" And so, we don't necessarily have good guidance or good processes. I would suggest that perhaps that better guidance about when people can build, you know, within the setback area close to water be something that perhaps we ask the engineering department or the Energy and Environment Commission to give us more details about, or more thoughts about how to consider these things in the future. We don't have that tonight, so I will support this, but that's something I'd like to see in the future, better guidance about encroachment.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of the variance request, subject to the findings in the staff, conditions in the staff report and engineering memo.
Second. And just as an amendment, do we have to add, Emily, do we have to add the dates of the plans, too? Is that something that was missing in the...
Yes, you can add the dates as well.
All right, so second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So the next public hearing is another variance request at 5053 Windsor. And Chris?
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the subject property is a variance, it is located at 5053 Windsor Avenue. It is a 4.8-foot sideyard setback variance request. The property is located south of Windsor Avenue. It consists of a single-family home with an attached one-car garage. It's a rather unique lot. It's much wider in the front, and it narrows towards the back. The side wall, the east side wall of the house, is not parallel to the side lot line. That's where the existing garage is located. The project is to add a small front entry and add to the existing one-car garage in order to accommodate two cars. So they're trying to achieve a two-car garage. Unfortunately, the way the house is situated on the lot, as well as the setback of the back corner of the house, it makes it quite difficult. This is a little closer view of that area in question, which is along the east side. This is a photograph of the existing home. It currently has a one-car garage. You can sort of see on the side here, they have a car that's parked on the driveway, and I guess that's pretty standard, what they have to do, park beside the house, and that's exactly where they would like to locate the garage addition. This is a survey of the home as it exists today, and then in the gray area is the proposed addition. There'll be a small front entry addition to the front of the house, which does conform to the alternate setback standard. And then, the expansion towards the east, which would then increase the single-stall garage into a two-car garage. The minimum sideyard setback requirement for this width of lot is 10 feet. They would like to reduce that setback to 5.2 feet. That's why they're requesting a 4.8-foot sideyard setback variance. You can see the area here is the area of encroachment. They've had to clip the back corner of the garage in order to go to the 5.2-foot sideyard setback. So here are the elevations that they're proposing for the new garage addition. It's a two-car garage with a small front entry. You can see on the side, this is towards the east, that clipped corner. As you go further back into the lot, the side wall gets closer and closer to the sideyard. So in order for them to keep that garage as far away from the sideyard as possible to the five-foot setback, they've had to clip that back corner. This is a photograph of the existing home with that single-stall garage, and then they've put that two-car garage image with the front entry to give you an idea of what it looks like from the street. There's still quite a bit of spacing between the side wall of the garage at the front corner and the home that's directly to the east. To the west, the house is actually facing Kent Avenue, which is on the opposite side, so this is sort of their side-back wall of the house, so it doesn't affect that property directly to the west. This gives you an idea of the homes that are in the vicinity that currently have two-car garages. Those are the areas that are highlighted in orange. So there are a lot of single-stall garages, but there are also a number of properties very nearby and directly adjacent that have two-car garages. And the properties that I've circled in blue are all properties that currently have five-foot setbacks either on one side or both sides of the home. So this is not a setback that is uncommon throughout the neighborhood. At the time, when the property owners were contemplating adding on to their garage, this was a number of years ago, and the minimum sideyard setback for an attached garage was five feet. Unfortunately, they submitted for a building permit. The ordinances have changed, given the width of the lot, so now the setback has doubled in order to accomplish what they would originally had wanted to, was add a five-foot setback and now requires a variance. The engineering department has reviewed the plans, and there is no storm water mitigation required for this project. It will require a grading plan, which is actually incorporated into their survey. They do meet all the other requirements regarding lot coverage and setback, and it does conform to the alternate setback standard. Staff is supportive of the request. It is a difficult lot to work with, given the fact that the house is not parallel to the side lot line, so as you try to add on further and further into the backyard on that east side, it gets closer to the sideyard. The five-foot setback is actually very similar to many of the properties that are existing nearby. Staff does recommend approval, and with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay, Phil?
Yes, Chris, just an observation. Can you call it, it's the Headup and County Property Map. It's got the lot outlined in blue. Yeah, that one, okay. So, yeah, these, all these issues would be easier if everything was at nice right angles. So it's clear, so the affected property, and so it'd be the property to the right, which I assume is to the north, then, I think. But, so that corner, yeah, right where you, is really well behind the neighbor of the house.
Yes.
Right, I mean, it's not, it's not five feet from the lot line, and then up against their house. It's well, it's much deeper, right, as it's shown?
Correct.
So right in there? Okay.
So the closest point is actually well behind the back wall of the affected property that's directly to the east. And then, this property, the home fronts Kent, so the side and the back are orienting towards Windsor Avenue, so it's really only this property. And because of just how the plat lays out, this house is so much further back than the house to the east.
That's fine, thank you.
Commissioner Nemraff?
Thank you very much, Chris. And can you confirm that the property that's going to be within, you know, that's going to be encroaching within the setback is exclusively just the garage, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chris. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? You don't have to, but it's always nice to hear.
My name is James McMahon. I live at 5053 Windsor Avenue. So we're just trying to do this project to make the home more livable, and it's a three-bedroom, three-bath, so the two-car garage fits within the size and structure of the house. We're really focusing on maintaining the character of the house. We're going to maintain the two-inch shiplap and really try and make the house and the addition seem like it was always there.
Any questions for the applicant? You're okay. You can sit, thanks. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Hearing none, seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Chris, did we receive any comments from neighbors on this one? I don't remember.
We did get a lot of support from someone across the street.
For support? Okay, great. Okay, great. So bring it back to the Planning Commission. Are there any additional comments? Motion? You are.
So I do, thank you, sorry to be rude there for a moment. So, there's a lot of nice things about this project, which is why I will support this variance, but I wanted to talk about setbacks again. It's my setback night. There's a lot of nice things about this project. It's not a teardown. It's building something to be within the character of the existing neighborhood. And the setback encroachment is exclusively the garage, and the garage is a one-to-one-and-a-half story garage. As I've been thinking about these things over time regarding setbacks, I am concerned that we moved setbacks to 10 feet on the side from five feet, and there's good reasons for that. As houses move from one to one-and-a-half stories to two, two-and-a-half stories, I think sometimes we've seen these setbacks come in where it ends up, you're eliminating light for the neighbors, and people are looking into each other's bedrooms or dining rooms because of window placement with the setbacks. But those problems aren't existing on this one. It's just a small portion of the yard that will be affected by the setback. It's exclusively garage. There's not going to be, you know, the property owners aren't going to be sitting in the garage looking into someone else's house, and their next-door neighbor isn't going to be looking at the property owners going about their daily lives, so... And because it's one-to-one-and-a-half stories, there's a lot less concern about using the older setbacks. So I think, I'd like to think more about setbacks, but in this case, I think this is a nice project, and for all the other reasons I said, too, I think it's deserving of support.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions and finding outlined in staff memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So next on the agenda is under Reports and Recommendations, we have three sketch plan reviews. Preliminary and final plat from Edina Market Street, sorry. And this is a public hearing. And Carrie, you're doing this one?
I am. Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This one, I would describe as most administrative, rather straightforward. So it is a preliminary plat. This is the Market Street project at 50th and France. Just a quick rendering of what that will look like once it's finished. We're looking on the north side of Market Street with this particular plat. So as you may recall, the north parking ramp is located on the site, and there was to be two retail lots carved out from that development. So what this plat does is, it creates the lot for the retail space. So coming forward now, we needed to draw legal descriptions around the walls, so that's the reason for it coming in after the development. So originally, this whole area was plotted as four lots. This will be three lots. So it's just carving out, out of the parking ramp, tracks B and C to be sold for the retail space within there. And then, the city would maintain ownership of the parking ramp above that retail space as well. as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat as, as, as shown on the screen. With that, I can stand for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Are there questions? Okay.
Okay, so I think it's, so there really are no changes.
There's no changes to the plans that were approved.
From what we have looked at and actions that have been taken, so.
Correct.
Just kind of catching up to the.
Right. Now that the walls are built, we can draw the lot lines now.
Good plan. Yeah.
Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so I wasn't here at the time, but, so how does it work that the city owns, like, land, or not land, but owns the parking ramp above these tracks? I mean, how does that, how does that work?
Yeah, it's, it's somewhat depicted in this elevation view. So it's, this is typical of a condominium plat, where you've got ownership within a condominium building. And tracks are drawn basically where the walls are. So with this particular, the tracks B and C, there's legal descriptions for all the sidewalls and the ceiling as well. So they just are purchasing that retail space.
Oh, great.
Kind of a 3D plat.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
The applicant is not here this evening. Part of the, the city is the applicant.
Right, okay. I guess I was just looking for the Edina Market Street, the LLC. Great. So this is also a public hearing. Is there any comments from the public?
I should close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bringing it back to the planning commission for comments or motion?
I move to approve the preliminary and final plat for Edina Market Street.
To second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So now we are moving on to reports, recommendations. We have three sketch plan reviews. The first one is at 6950 France Avenue. And so Carrie, before you start, or maybe this is part of your presentation, but again, can you walk through how far we go, what, what we're supposed to be reviewing as far as a sketch plan?
Yes, sure, certainly. Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. So you do have three sketch plans in front of you this evening, and they're all in very different stages of development. You recall, as part of the Southdale Plan, we were wanting to get, try to get away from more, you know, really detailed plans coming in as sketch plans. Obviously, you know, we've got a lot of developers who are familiar with our, with our process and dive into the detail. This first plan that you're going to be reviewing this evening, it's virtually a code-compliant plan. Most of the sketch plans that we review, it's a rezoning request. They're asking for something significant. This one, not so much. We've even had sketch plans for completely code-compliant projects before. So there'll be a little bit of a learning process in terms of having a sketch plan discussion on a truly sketch, you know, where we're just seeing block diagrams. Some of our second and third proposals this evening are more along those lines. This one, a lot of the detail has been, has been provided.
Okay. And then again, they're here just to kind of hear our thoughts, comments, changes?
Correct. Yep. Any, any feedback to help potentially improve the plans? Or if there's something that you don't like, state that as well.
Okay, great.
So with this first one, this is located at 6950 France Avenue. It's just south of 69th, north of 70th. You may recall, this was the south property for the Estelle project. You recall the two taller buildings that were proposed. So what, the property exists today, there's a 28,000 square foot. It's, I believe it's a three-story office building. And what they are proposing, the property is zoned planned commercial district, so it's guided for retail-type uses, or zoned for retail uses. What the applicant is proposing is a 10,000 square foot, so it would be a smaller building than what's there today, but a 10,000-square-foot retail building with parking in the back. So here's a look of, of the building from France Avenue. How the prop, how it would sit on the site. The applicant has, you know, they've reviewed, they're very familiar with the design experience guidelines and the Southdale District Plan. They're respecting the 50-foot setback from the curb, and you may note in your packet, they've designed several different schemes for how that might, how that might be developed so you could provide the applicant with some feedback on preferences from those alternatives. The existing, so there is a little right-of-way stub that comes in off of France here. It's currently parking for the building. What they're proposing to do here is this could be retained as proof of parking, or could be retained or redeveloped for parking, but they're showing a green space along here. And again, parking in the back. So here's some of those examples, and I'll let the applicant describe some of those features on the front. So as I noted earlier, this is virtually a code-compliant. They would be, with that proof of parking, provide adequate parking per our zoning ordinance. It's well under our floor area ratio requirement, well within the height regulations, and all the setbacks are met, with the exception of the setback along that north lot line. So it's this 16-foot setback. So they would be seeking a variance for that setback. With that, I can stand for questions, and the applicant is here as well to, would make a short presentation.
Okay. Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Strauss?
Carrie, yeah, that view, so that north, that north lot line, is that a platted west 69 and a half street? Is that a platted street? It just?
It is. Originally, I believe it was intended to go all the way through. You recall, within the, within the Southdale District Plan, the idea is to divide this, this entire property up into blocks. So this right-of-way could be used as an extension to Valley View, and you recall also, the east or the west promenade is also something that we looked at with this project, and it would extend up to 69th Street. So with this plan, that, that west promenade still could happen. They're proposing parking at this time, but should all the property develop around it and we get that district parking that, that the plan contemplates, you know, there's, there's some opportunity there to, to make that, that west promenade with future development.
So that measurement, is it from what would be the center line of, of the street? Or is, or is it the?
For the setback requirement?
Yeah, that 16, actually, so it looks like it would be the south right-of-way line of 69 and a half street.
Correct. Yep, it would be the, the red dashed line here would be the property line.
Okay. Because remember, I was, I mean, the lot is platted, is sort of the middle of the street, right? I mean, that would be.
Yeah, it's platted as right-of-way, this, this.
It is.
Extension that comes in, correct?
But it just looks like a driveway.
That's, that's as it functions today, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lee, did you have, or was there somebody? Did you?
The proposed access easement, can you explain that?
Yeah, this probably doesn't show it very well, but I'm going to look, yeah, yeah. They'll have a graphic that will show, but there's access easement agreements with the adjacent property owners to allow that access.
Okay. And then my next question is about that western promenade. How exactly does, I understand how it might sort of sneak through that particular parcel. Looks like it's going to go on the east side of the, is that the veterinary clinic?
Yes.
Okay. So, so potentially there, where does it continue down to join the 7200 project?
Yeah, and so it, it's just a, you know, a line drawn on, on the map. I should have had one of those, but it would, potentially could come down Sandell, you know, potentially go through this property, maybe it jogs to Linmar and proceeds to the south.
So it really appears like that's, that's the assumption for that west promenade is going to have to go through some residential areas, right? Or take out some of the residential areas?
In this location, I recall, it was pretty close to Sandell.
Okay. Then it would, it would stay on Sandell?
And then proceed to the north.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Again, it's not a set in stone. The idea is to provide a west promenade somewhere parallel to France Avenue as the opportunity arises.
Okay. Thank you.
So it looks like the, the parking area is 123 feet and wide, I mean, going to the building, actually. And I think the promenade at, at 7200 was 90 feet wide. Is that true? Was it narrowed?
It was a little bit narrower, yeah. In the 70, 60 to 70 foot.
So if we do continue it here, it's pretty much going to obliterate all that parking.
Potentially, or could be half on this property, half on adjacent property.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Nemra?
Down here on the west side of the dais. Carrie, that 69 and a half street, to use that as access, is the county going to be involved at all, or is that going to depend on the parking and traffic study?
Yeah, that would be something that would be looked at as part of the traffic and parking study, but they're not proposing any changes, so it would basically remain as-is today.
That's my only question. Thanks, Carrie.
I guess this, this graphic shows the access easement there, so I'm assuming that's to come off, to come off of the 69 and a half street through this area here in order to access to the back.
Just as, and that's used today, right? The people are accessing and departing this property on that street?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Carrie.
Great. Thanks, Carrie. So the applicant like to speak? Present?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and staff. My name is Ed Far, Edward Farr Architects, 7710 Golden Triangle Drive, Eden Prairie. Pardon my raspy voice. It's good for you, because I'll keep it short tonight. And with me tonight is Luigi Bernardi, representing the property owner of Arcadia on France LLC. So besides liking any comments that you have about our proposal and our graphics, there's two things I'd like to get from you tonight also. But before I do, let me just, I did bring a PowerPoint, but if, there's an overhead camera. I have that larger graphic up on the screen. Thank you. And that shows in blue the proposed access easement. The reason why we're having to ask for that access easement, a little bit further west than 69 and a half street extends now, is because our building is getting a little fatter. The current building, we're going to be putting our building in about the same place as the current multi-story office building, but it's becoming a little deeper. And so our driveway can't quite fit on the end of 69 and a half street. Luckily, Mr. Bernardi owns that adjacent property for BMO Harris Bank, so he can give himself that easement freely and readily, just in case you were wondering about that. The other coded blue shading, similar, is an existing access easement that comes off of West 70th Street for the benefit of this property. Because we're mid-block, we only have access, direct access to France Avenue on southbound. The median separator, of course, prevents left-hand turn mid-block, so for the people that may want to or could, they could have access through the Kinderberry property, which has ingress and egress easements to this property's rear yard. That's just for informational purposes. As Carrie mentioned, we have been doing a variety of conceptual layouts for the front yard, and we're really excited about the pedestrian engagement opportunities there along France to fulfill some of the city's vision here. And we've kind of been honing in on concept A ourselves. If you've had a chance to thumb through them, they just have a variety of geometric options to them. But one of the goals is to get visible stormwater management, maybe with some rain gardens or things like that. So we're doing some formalization of some stormwater management for the roof water that comes off. We don't know exactly who the tenants will be yet for this retail building, but one of the tenants that they're talking to strongly is a very high-end furniture store, and we might be able to partner with them to have some outdoor furniture engagement here. So hence, there's some plaza areas where there could be some very nice high-end furniture, might rotate seasonally, as well as some bench seating, bike parking, of course, for visitors. That's important for multimodal transportation opportunities. So we think it'll be a very engaging and fun front yard, and we're looking forward to developing that further. Of the two questions that I had for you, one is, going back on our facade. We've actually been reading, reading this, the Greater Southdale District Design Experience Guidelines, and that's where, of course, we get this 50-foot setback from the curb line of France Avenue and many other goals of yours. And in the street room form part of the booklet, one of your goals is to have all-new building facades in the district, must have 75% transparency at the ground level. That's a pretty heavy lift. And so, being an architect, we get involved with not only your zoning codes, but also the building codes and energy codes. And I don't want to do a deep dive into the energy code, but we have two energy code opportunities in the state of Minnesota. One of them has a 30% maximum glass on a facade. The other one has a 40% maximum glass on a facade, far short of 75. There's an opportunity in one of those two codes to go up to 75 if you have cantilevered sunscreens that go out 50% of the height of the glass. So if we have glass 18 feet high, that's a nine-foot cantilever of a sun shelf, which is structurally challenging. And you can only do that on the front side of the building anyway. You can't do it on the other three sides. So I, I'm thinking that what you meant is maybe a blended here of, maybe on a multi-story building, maybe you could have 75% transparency on the ground floor, but from an architectural standpoint, I'd have to use a blended, get down to that 30% or 40% by using maybe 20% glass up on third, fourth, fifth, and sixth stories, and able to go into the energy code and comply with anything close to this. So for a single-story building, it's unreasonable to think that we can get 75% because the code just doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
So our, our design would love to have vision glass all the way up to here. There was a request to have the tall stories on first floor, 20 feet, so we're doing that. And we'd love to have glass 18, 20 feet high, but I can't, so I'm going to, I'm going to make that spandrel glass so that it looks like glass, but we won't be able to see through it. Energy code, again. So if, if there's, if I'm missing something on what the city's intent was, I'd like to hear that. Sometimes I'm not the smartest bulb on the tree, so I just want to make sure that I'm understanding your, the rest of that. The second thing has to do with building materials. We're in a district where brick, stone, precast, glass are required, and that's fine, but with the modern look that we're going after here, I'm wondering if you'd entertain one of the newer, higher-end commercial products like fiber cement paneling. You used it on a project across the street recently, or you didn't, but the architect did. The 71 France project, those went up. The colored facade is that Nisha brand fiber cement panels. It's a dimensionally stable panel. It doesn't oil can, and so if that's one of the more contemporary materials that you would allow in this district, I'd like to know that. If not, we'd like to know that also. I did bring some samples, if you're interested in seeing that, and comparing it to stone if you'd like. Pass these around if you'd like, but precast concrete. This is actually natural stone, different colors, it doesn't matter. This is a fiber cement panel. It has a smooth texture, it's very dimensionally stable. It's thick, commercial grade, comes in satin finishes, those reflective finishes. And it's the look that we would kind of like to have on the building. Sorry, thank you. It's the look we would like to have on the building. So if you have any feedback on whether or not you're open to alternative building materials on the facade, I'd appreciate that feedback. We'll stand for questions. Thank you.
Great. Do I have quick, go ahead.
Why modern?
Truthfully, the project was conceived after getting a number of calls from tenants who want to be in the building. And that's the message that was conveyed to the property owner. And so we responded in like-kind, and after a couple renderings, they were all responding favorably to this style of architecture. Good question. Thank you.
Do you have, can you give me a general idea of the type of tenants in there that you, is this office or retail?
It's not office. It'll be retail, yes. Like I said, there's a high-end furniture store that's very interested. We understand there might be a high-end lighting store that might be interested. So it's not going to be a drive-through Starbucks or a coffee shop.
Okay.
Retail.
Yeah, great.
Any other questions for the Commissioner Navarro?
Thank you, Mr. Farr. I think you're a bright, the sharp tool in the shed, so if you think you're not, then I don't know what that says about me. But thank you very much for your presentation. A couple of things, first of all, one area where you are sharper than I am is in how to design layouts of properties, but you asked for our feedback regarding your conceptual plans. I actually, and take it, take it kind of as a grain of salt, I kind of like the front on item C and the rear on item B. I look at the rear on concept B, and I see that with, you know, it's kind of, would that be a comfortable area for people, employees, to take breaks with the lined-up bonnies? And then the front of, on C, it looks like it could be kind of a unique space without stinting in any kind of pedestrian area in the front, or people have to feel like they have to turn sideways if they're walking by someone. Whereas like in item B, it looked like some of the, the front in the front, some of the seating or walking areas could get narrower. So those are just my thoughts there. Take it for what it's worth. Regarding materials, regarding transparency, as someone who's served on the Southdale Task Force, I want to think about it a little bit more, particularly your question about transparency. I do suspect that your insight is correct, that there, that we were contemplating taller buildings and with the blend with the first floor being more of a see-through look to make it more engaging to pedestrians and then to achieve the balance that you're talking about through the higher stories. So I'd like to think about it a little bit more. I do think that, you know, as you mentioned, Trent, the energy code is also a value. So I'd like to think about that some more, and perhaps Carrie can communicate to you outside of here. Regarding the building materials, I think that is one that was expressly discussed regardless of size of the building. And there was, there was a conscious decision to move away from those kinds of materials that you're presenting and asking. So that's kind of the feedback I have for you. But again, generally, it's, I'm sorry you don't feel well, it's always, you know, you gave a nice presentation and, you know, and I think it's, I think it's good to be replacing that building. I think the idea, because of this came up, I went by that building on purpose the other day and took a look at it, and I agree with what you're saying. It's time, I think a new building will refresh that area. And just, you know, I think the materials are going to be, are important to this, are important to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miranda?
Yeah, is there a reason that, I mean, the bike racks are twice as far from the building as the parking lot is? Is there, are you amenable to moving them closer to the building?
In scheme A, you're probably looking at, but...
I'm looking at A, yeah. I don't even see them in the other ones, but...
Yeah. Thinking that they would be probably used for more visitor than employees, we thought that active pedestrian way along France Avenue would be the most appropriate place to invite people to park their bike, to promote the bike traffic. If, that was our thought. We could put some on the west side as well, or in lieu of, if you think that's a better location.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, just like with a car, I mean, you want to park as close to the building, whether you're in a car or bicycle, and so...
Sure.
Having, having them visible from the sidewalk or wherever, I don't know what's, it's not legal to ride a sidewalk there, is it? No. So I don't know where they'd ride. Somewhere closer to the building, I think, would be more convenient.
Okay.
So...
Duly noted. Thank you.
I appreciate the different designs that you presented for the landscaping and the stormwater features. It seems you put some thought into that, and for the most part, they're attractive. So thank you for that. The building itself is not impressive. It looks to me like, kind of looks like a temporary building? Like maybe a building you would put up for 20 years while you're waiting because you own the block? And once everything else, once everything's ready, then you can put up a building worthy of the space, worthy of the property. And I think about a year ago, you brought Estelle to us, which was a real gem, and was worthy of the land. Unfortunately, it was the wrong timing, and the city wasn't ready for it. This is a one-story, generic, boring building, but, you know, aside from a tiny piece, it's, I mean, it's basically co-compliant. So there isn't really much we can do. So instead of having this gem that would really distinguish the city, we're going to have kind of a generic concrete rectangle. But I do appreciate that you put a lot of effort into the landscaping and different ideas for how you could make it attractive in the meantime. So thank you.
Thank you, I think. Yes.
I guess I would agree with Sheila a little bit. It has kind of an auto dealership feel. But on the other hand, I, what I appreciate is that I understand your, this is sketch plan, so I wouldn't want you to fully detail it out yet. My first reaction is, I like the scale of it. I agree with the glass. I think that that clearly was in response to a much higher, taller building. And when you get to this scale, it really is very human scale. So because of that, I would say maybe the material palette maybe needs to go more towards something that's a little more modular, like a brick, that humans can relate to more. So whether or not it actually is brick, you almost want that level of scale or grid work to define it. I don't, I don't think that the building itself really needs to have two stories of glass. So again, if you can establish a great ground floor level with some upper windows that maybe show some of the furnishings or whoever the tenants are, that could be very, very charming. Looking at the site plan, I think that there's, this could be a real gem because if you just take a look at the room and board building that is also on France, kind of a standalone thing, but there's a possibility to integrate your design concept to actually reach out to the parking area. I could see some, some kind of intertwining green spaces back there to get to the parking, to the building, and now they kind of relate. So I think that might drive some of the design vocabulary about what this building needs to be. Right now, it's probably, I would guess it's France that makes it feel so sterile. And I think, take your cues from the site itself. What do you want this to really feel like? It's a two-story building with four great tenants. I think the building could be iconic and that people would point to it. Oh, you're in the such-and-such building because it's, it's unique. So there's some real opportunity there. And the last thing I was going to say, I appreciate the 50-foot setback. I did clarify on a previous project, I believe, that one part of the Greater Southdale Plan is to establish this sort of Champs-Élysées feel. So there's going to be a real emphasis on the tree line. So I do like your A concept the best, but I think that it could be even stronger if you actually take those row of trees you're showing kind of on the sides of the building and run that down the front somehow, incorporate it in the front. The current building has three large trees. I just drove past that. And I think there is something about that feel of a boulevard tree that you could help to establish for France, particularly at a very human scale. So even though it's a small parcel, I think it's a real key, key spot that you have an opportunity to, oh, wow, you know, it's going to be hard for others to match it because it's so, so great and so unique. So great job as far as just getting a good start on it and giving us something to give feedback to. I do appreciate that.
Those are all great comments. Thank you so much. I did almost purposely leave off a lot of the facade detail in terms of the scale of the material, not knowing where we would be going with the final building material selection. So that will be to come, despite the fact that the modern slick, sleek image is something that was a basic concept and tenet of our design. With the 50-foot setback, that distance from our ultimate consumer driving up and down France Avenue does push the building height up proportionally. We want to make sure that, this is a very expensive piece of land. You all know that. And so to be 50 feet away from your consumer on such an expensive piece of land, height is everything to us. Height, windows, signage, it's retail. And so the over-story trees in front of a building 50 feet away don't match the intensity of the retail exposure that the site demands and commands. So we'll try and do everything we can do at a groundscape level to provide all of that interest in pedestrian engagement without necessarily hiding what we're paying so dearly for on France Avenue, if you understand.
Perhaps you could sort of establish that tree line with something, some kind of repetitive feature. And others can maybe pick it up with over-story trees, but I think that would be one thing to just think about, if there's a way to do that.
I agree. Thank you for that. Great feedback.
I'm just going to, I'm just going to jump in on those trees, too. I had the same comment as Commissioner Lee, and I absolutely want to see them. I was on the Greater Southdale Plan, too, and the purpose is to have that boulevard with those trees. So I want to, you know, if you come back, I want to see boulevard trees on the, along France. But I have more comments, Paul. Jimmy, go ahead.
I don't know what to really say. It's Noah Estelle. That's just kind of how I feel about all this. And, you know, what we're seeing is, you know, when people make decisions and, you know, you have to come back and this is what we get instead, it's frustrating and disappointing, sitting up here and seeing this now. I'm not saying it's bad, but compared to what it could be, it's not ideal for the community. What you've done with it is great. I also, I echo Ian's commentary. I prefer Concept C with the, with kind of the more random meandering of the experience for the landscaping as well as maybe softer tones or different materials for the building. I can also just relate from a retail perspective of blocking that visibility with only having one floor. I'm either way on the boulevard trees. I see that you need that visibility with what you're doing. So if this does go forward, and, you know, we have to sit with this for a long time, whatever else we can do to make sure that a future potential promenade goes along the western portion of that, I'd love to hear what, I guess, you guys see to adapt to that in the future? Because right now, it's parking and, you know, it's a one-direction one. So how would you modify that? That's, I guess, my only question. And how would you foresee if that changed? And maybe the western portion of the site is planned for that. How would you guys respond to that? That's a question I have.
I don't know if I could answer that this evening.
Okay.
But right, that's one of the reasons why the building is, of course, a little bit closer to France Avenue, besides the exposure there, in case anything did happen. That Vunruth way, that West Promenade, it's very, I would say, easy to integrate. It's just parking back there, so we're not putting any building or structure back there. So a lot of visionary thinking would have to happen before we get to that point, I think.
Well, question, do we have another chance to talk amongst ourselves, or is this just all the feedback we give here? So, okay, so this is all the feedback, right. I'm going to disagree with the others and say that I liked Option A, just because, you know, a sidewalk is not a decoration. It's a, it's a piece of infrastructure for people who walk. And I think people like generally rectilinear things to walk on. You know, you want to go to a destination, so you want to, you want it as straight as possible. The, you know, B and C strike me as very sort of, you know, 1900s suburban. They just don't, I don't think they would fit, they would fit into their, into it today, but I don't think they would fit into it in what we're trying to do with the Southdale Area Plan or Guidelines. Then in terms of the trees and the sidewalk, you know, I think the idea was that we wanted a 50-foot setback because I think we wanted to get people further away from the street. And this, this looks like it's just continuing the sidewalk that's there today, and that is not comfortable at all for pedestrians. So if anything you could do to move that further away, and trees are one things that make, you know, any kind of barrier, any kind of barrier between the sidewalk and cars is something that would make pedestrians feel more comfortable. And then, you know, you talk about the Southdale District plans, and, I mean, I've never seen a single-story building anywhere in the Southdale District plan. So I know we don't have a lot to say in this, but I just want to say this, I don't think this fits at all. But since we don't have a lot to say about it, I guess I prefer Concept A in terms of it, but I prefer more room for pedestrians.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I might ask in return then, because I appreciate your comment about maybe taking the sidewalk a little bit further away from the curb line of France Avenue, and I saw a couple heads nod. And we don't mind that at all. We just thought there might be a requirement from you to keep it tight and then offer other things kind of inboard of that. So with the proximity of our neighboring building to the south that just got put up, the Vitamin Shop, American Trade Building, which was tied up to France Avenue, it's PUD, we're back 50 feet, and so now we've got this yard they don't. And so they've got the sidewalk tight to the curb, and then on the Brumberg Bank site to the north of us, their, that sidewalk runs fairly close to the curb as well. So we didn't think you'd want the in-and-out and in-and-out. So tell me differently, as you expressed, and we'll take that into consideration.
Yeah, so the evidently, I mean, that was built before we had the Southdale Area Guidelines. It's, yeah, it's difficult when you have an existing building. So I didn't say we were, our request was reasonable.
Well, thanks.
But no, no, kidding aside, you know, in general, anything you can do to, to put it back even a little bit, even just have a little jiggle in it so it goes back, and have something there so that pedestrians feel more separated from the street would be wonderful.
All right. And so just coming back to my comments, I think if, when you come back, again, kind of show how it really does fit in with that Greater Southdale Plan. And I know that we're real sensitive to that with all of our, you know, small area plans and the large, you know, Southdale Area Plan. But I hate to just immediately start pushing, you know, like, well, we can fix it the next time, or we'll wait till the next one. So I think, again, I'm going to be pretty adamant to try to meet the requirements of the Greater Southdale Plan as best possible. So with that, you know, I think Commissioner Miranda mentioned it, too, and you even mentioned it, this is really expensive property, but one story, two stories, I mean, you can go up four stories. And I think that that's kind of what we were looking for in that area along France, to have more height that does allow you to, you know, put the sidewalk back, provide those boulevard trees, and take advantage of that. So I would give it some thought. take advantage of that. So I would give it some thought to come in higher, put more on that site. And I'll just finish, and then you can come back. With the, I kind of like A, too, the A option. I like, I like having kind of that straight sidewalk, and again, add boulevard trees, press the sidewalk back. And I love your, the water features and all of that that you're doing. And I think part of that, too, one of the things we wanted to do in that area is to include educational components to that. So anything you can do to kind of, as people walk by, you know, they can understand this is stormwater treatment, or this is, you know, what it's doing. So, like to see plans for that, too. Just want to make, confirm that everyone has access to that street room, so it's kind of a public space, or is that going to just be for your clients, or?
Public. It's not private.
Okay. I think, again, that, that glass, you know, yes, we were looking at higher buildings, and we, we can look at that, but maybe consider coming in with something more than one story, two stories. That's, that's what I had. So, any other? Yeah.
I think, since we're also having kind of a discussion up here on the bench, I, I don't have a problem with the two-story building. And I, I think that we have to be prepared if that's what our zoning says, that, that we accept. It's kind of like when a property owner asks to do certain things, we don't say, why don't you make it bigger, taller. But I do think that there are some things that can be done to really make this a more distinctive building. So I think focus on that pedestrian realm. I think that's really what we're after. So that's the part of the elements of the Southdale Plan, that you might be able to glean some information. I don't think Southdale was all about just building tall buildings. It was really about connectivity. So, the two-story, it's very workable, if there was something unique about it. I think that's what we're feeling, that there's a bit of a lack of uniqueness there. The, the Western Promenade, I was asking Carrie earlier about those questions, saying where it's going, I'm not sure that that's going to be possible to carry all the way through. It may be on this parcel. I think what's more important is the one you've established already. More likely, it will be 69 and 1/2 that will bisect that. I'm not sure quartering it will actually all be, you can do it, but I'm not sure exactly how it feeds into the Western Promenade. So, just in your prioritization of that. So, yeah, I, I think that economically, if that works for you, put a little more into sort of the material and the finishes and the design. That's what's going to be key, and we can get a great building out of that.
And this is, this is a question for Carrie, as much as it is a comment for Mr. Farr. My memory of the Southdale Design Experience Guide, as I haven't looked at them for a while, is that the 70%, was that all four, all four facades of the ground level to be transparent? Or was that just the pedestrian-facing portions of the ground level? Do you remember?
Yeah, I don't recall specifically. My recollection was it's on the, the street-facing facade.
Mr. Farr might have looked at it more recently than you or I have, I suspect.
I was just going to read it, if you don't mind, just.
Not at all.
I brought page 16 from your February 22nd draft copy of the Greater Southdale District Design Experience Guidelines under the Street Room Form. It says, "All new building facades in the district must have 75% transparency at the ground level."
So that's all facades?
All four.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Farr. I mean, I think we'd like to see, figure something out. And obviously, as, as I and others have spoken, have said, you know, that was contemplating taller buildings, as you said also, you know.
And I should add, too, this is, I'm not sure how much we can really apply the Design Experience Guidelines in the comprehensive plan. We've got a, virtually a code compliant. We're really looking at, is the variance justified on the north side? You know, we can ask for some of these things. You know, we can require sidewalks, that's part of our standard zoning. But to go too far above, you know, there's only so much we can, can obtain here.
Oh, definitely. I understand. I was just responding to one of the two questions, and just thinking through it more after the discussion.
Any other comments?
Just, since we're having discussion, Lou, you know, I think I've come around to Concept A, and I think more so from the perspective of providing a pedestrian experience that keeps you away from the street, yet keeps it connected to neighboring properties. So if one were to redevelop, if you look at Concept A, you could connect to the back set of sidewalk. And, yeah, it kind of meanders a bit, but you're farther from the street, and then, you know, maybe they could change it. But right now, if someone's walking from one sidewalk and they're trying to get from point A to point B, they're just going to take that straight line. So, I, I can see the value of Concept A, just as it is, because you could kind of tie on, if one of the neighboring properties, properties were to redevelop, kind of tie on to those back sidewalks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the feedback very much. With a one-acre site, we're probably not going to come back with a five-story, but.
I didn't say five.
Parking is limited.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next sketch plan is 4404 Valley View Road.
Okay, our next request, this property is located in the Valley View Wooddale Small Area Plan area. It is, it's the former Burley site, kind of as it's been known as in the past. That building has been removed from the site, so it is vacant. Property Zone Plan Commercial District 1. And within the small area plan, it's suggested for two stories and 30 feet tall. And so it's this corner piece right here. So as part of the Edina Flats project, this site that we're looking at here at the intersection of Oaklawn and Valley View, it was approved for a two-story, four-unit condominium building. What the applicant, here's a look of the approved plan. You can see two stories and that 30-foot requirement. What the applicant would like to do is change that plan out and build a three-story, 13,000-square-foot office and retail building. So the idea would be, rather than going underneath with the parking, as was contemplated with the condo, have the first-level parking, and then the two retail or office space above the building. So here's a general rendering of how the, how the building potentially could sit on the site. This is a view to the north. You can kind of get a scale sense of the property to the north. So here's how the building would sit on the site, and a few other renderings that they've provided. So what would be required with this project would be a site plan review, a parking stall variance. This is quite a bit short parked, short, what is that, almost 50 spaces. Building height variance, so it would take an amendment to the comprehensive plan to increase that height to three stories and 38 feet. And there's a number of building setback variances. This structure would be a little bit closer to the street than that previous proposal. So there really would be looking for variances on all of our standard setbacks, building height, floor ratio, and parking. So some of the concern staff has is, you know, it's not consistent with the, the small area plan, how it transitioned, and this is a good example, how it transitions to the neighborhood to the north, in that the shortage of parking. So I've expressed those concerns to the applicant, and they've talked about showing some alternative plans. I'm not sure if they've, and how they're going to address some of those, some of those issues. But those are staff's concerns. With that, I can stand for questions.
Carrie, can you show us what has, of Valley View flats, what has been built? I mean, there were?
Yeah, so it's the property along Kellogg.
Okay.
That's under construction today. This was contemplated as that second phase.
Okay. And then to the west, is that the, the Blue Horizon?
This is the New Horizon, correct.
Okay. And the, like I said, the original proposal on the Oaklawn, that was to be all residential. That was the floor.
Correct.
Townhome or condo?
Yep.
Yes.
Four units and two stories.
Thank you.
Carrie, did we review that? I'm, I'm still blanking on that. We actually reviewed that Burley Parsley.
Yes.
Parcel.
Yes. And there's a number of variances that went along. This was the site plan.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to see, but you can see the setback. So there was variances that were.
Okay, and that was approved?
Correct.
Okay. And then that, that was approved was two stories, is that right?
Correct.
And the total height was?
30 feet.
30 feet. Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering, how, is it relatively often that there are such large variances granted for projects that kind of blow through most of the guidelines?
Excellent question. So I'll go to the, it's not typical that we see this amount of variances for really all four sides. There were variances that are existing on the site for that previously approved project, but not to the degree that's proposed here. The one project I can think in town that probably had the most variances was the Twin City Orthopedic Building, right on the crosstown off of France. There's variances on all four, all sides of that project. That was before the PUD ordinance, but there was like 12 variances associated with that project. So it's, we don't see it very often.
Thank you, Carrie. Would the applicant like to present?
Thanks, Carrie. Thanks for, Commissioner, for taking the time to hear us out. My name is Dave Ramek, one of the owners of the builder and developer and the site, both, all the parcels of the Edina Flats. Just to give an update on where the project is, because I was a question of this before. So the Burley site, we refer to as Building 1, and then Buildings 2, 3, 4, and 5 are on the parcel that run north along Kellogg. We are, Buildings 2, 3, and 4 are under construction. We expect to complete to shell Building 2 and have the, our model unit completed by June 7. So the exterior landscaping and all that will be completed within the first week of June. And then 3 and 4 will be completed probably August, September. And that's, in those buildings, we have homeowners that are going to be moving into those units at that time. Following on to that will be Building 5, which will be completed. So, big, you know, anticipating a question is why the requested change. A lot of that is really market-driven by what we're hearing from people's response to the other buildings, and challenges with the site in terms of building underground parking. Because the structure is largely, almost exactly the same as what's going in for building, for the second building that has three stories, and so a total of six units for the four units. So it's presenting a challenge to be able to deliver those units where the market's going to accept them, and have it do it with four units versus the six units. So that's what's driven our pause to reconsider what we potentially could do with the site. And we believe it will work better as a commercial site, which it was prior. Our anticipated use is built-to-suit office space, and our plan would be to have the style kind of finish fit in with the Edina Flats finishes. So it'd be very easy to fit it in, so it has a consistent look and feel to the Edina Flats. The type of tenants, we've, we've had some preliminary conversations with people, it would not be very parking-intensive tenants. There'd be no retail, it'd be office space, so it really wouldn't be very parking-intensive is, is where our plan is there. And the size we proposed, certainly understand the question of the amount of variances from standard. What we tried to stay around, because again, the direction was, let's have a sketch, let's have a discussion, and go from there, is very similar, in some cases more, in some cases less, than what was approved for the existing building one, in terms of all the different setbacks. And then from a height standpoint, yeah, the current building is 30, and we're requesting 38 feet, and that is the same height as our Building 2 and lower than the variance that was granted for the New Horizons daycare. And the reason for our desire to have the parking on grade is, it's, the challenge of getting in and out of that, more getting out to getting onto Valley View. We feel it would be easier for the driver on a flat on grade, rather than having to go up a ramp than out to a street. So that's kind of a practicality that's driven our desire to explore that. And really, I'll wrap up and just, you know, we're here to, you know, kind of ask for, you're obviously gather feedback, answer questions, but really get permission to proceed and then bring forward a more formal design that incorporates, you know, the feedback that we get this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions. And I have Ken Phillips here from Tannock, who's the architect that we're working with on this project. If you have more technical questions, then I can answer.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Schlesker.
Yes, Mr. Barr. I'm curious, the building, how is it orientated mostly towards Oaklawn or Valley View? What would be like the front door? Do you, I mean, the?
So our anticipation would, parking, you would enter the parking lot both from Oaklawn and from, or from Valley View, and then you would go into the building, I believe we've got it oriented where the stairway and elevator would be on the corner of Valley View and Oaklawn, so that front corner.
Okay, okay. So you'd be entering the rear of the building off of Valley View? I think that's the?
No, the rear of the building would be the north part of the.
Okay, okay.
Of the lot.
Okay, thank you.
How, how are you feeling about the sales on the, or the interest in the residences you've built on Kellogg?
So of the 15 units that are included in those four buildings, we have four sales. And the predominant interest has been from empty nesters or folks that live elsewhere during the winter. And so the activity now that we, I don't know if you'd call recent weather more reliably warm, certainly better than what February and March were, as they've come back from Arizona or Florida, the, the pace of interest has really picked up. And we anticipate that with the model being open and having people be able to walk through and kind of see and feel the space, once it's built to shell for all the other units, we're, we're optimistic.
So you're saying that you want to change your proposal for the building on Oaklawn from residences to business?
Correct.
Because you're afraid economically it won't work as a residence? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because sales weren't as good as you expect?
No, the, it is a complicated building plan to do the underground parking with the ramp as such that it is, that curves down, and the extent of engineering that's required, which drives steel, concrete, and all of those. So we're essentially building that podium, and we're only able to leverage that cost over four units instead of six. And I don't believe we'd be able to, because the offering is, the offering of those units would be substantially similar to the six-unit building. So we really aren't going to, I don't anticipate we'd be able to realize the increase in, in price on those, to spread it over four versus six.
So that makes sense. I guess what I'm curious about, though, is when you asked for the variances for Oaklawn, did you not think about that? Mm-hmm.
We had some consideration, but the full engineering designs were not completed at that time. that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. So I was just wondering, there's a variance from around 70 parking spaces to 20 spaces. Why, where would those 50 spaces go?
So again, that goes to our, the conversations we've had with prospective tenants, we don't anticipate them being intense parking users. So that's, that's.
So are, like, are the city's estimates wrong, then?
I don't know if it's estimates versus just what the standard is. It's why I think for office space, Carrie, it's one space per 5,000 feet, or five per 200.
Yeah, so the numbers that are in the report are what our zoning ordinance requires, just based on the square footage of the use. Should they move forward, we would do a parking study to, we'd take a closer look at what those uses are proposed. Staff would have some concern, that is quite a large number to be, to be over. So we'd really have to take a close look at regulating the uses that could go in the building, should something like this proceed. So the, to me, that's one of the biggest questions with the project, is the short part.
Thank you.
So I'm going to be a contrarian here, and I'm not really so concerned about the parking. What I am concerned about is that the whole first level is parking. I mean, this is a sketch plan, so I know you haven't drawn out what it's going to look like or anything, but, you know, if we're trying to make this, this is sort of like 44th and France, which is where, near, I live. And when I was on the small area plan for that, you know, one of the things we want is we want a, you know, enjoyable, walkable area. You're building those new residences nearby. And so having a parking on the first level, because really, all you see as a pedestrian is the first level. And so if it's just going to be like a building entrance and, you know, even if it's screened, if it's parking, I think that's going to be kind of a terrible use. I won't make any friends by saying that, you know, this is a small neighborhood note, and I would actually prefer a two-story building that may not have any parking at all on it, just so that we have a shorter building and we have more, you know, interaction with the street. Is there, was there any chance that you could have any kind of small retail or, or something that would engage users on the first level?
There's, yeah, certainly there is. And to address your question of the parking, we would certainly want to have the facade appear as though it was, so it would look similar to what the, you know, building too. So it would look like there is not parking in there. So it would be concealed in search ways, so not just a screen or a see-through, so the engagement would feel like you're walking by, you know, not parking, but, you know, some sort of finished square footage on the other side. And we could certainly, you know, as we come back, some iterations that would explore some sort of ground-level space.
Yeah, because, you know, screening and making it look like it's something is, you know, a sort of a old way of doing things. And I think we know now that if you want to have a really engaging space, you need people around, and people who are going in and out of buildings. And if you just, if you, you know, if it's a mock building or a mock, you know, facade, I don't think, I don't think for such a small area, that's really going to provide what I think this neighborhood really needs, so. Yeah, I, but in terms of the variances, in terms of, you know, how close it is to the street and whatever, I'm perfectly okay with that, because I think, I don't, I think it's too close to the house to the north.
Okay.
But in terms of being close to the street, I think that's kind of the village feel that we want when we talk about this sort of thing. I think they talked about it at 70th and Cahill also. So I'm not concerned about that, but really, it's such a small neighborhood, we kind of have to take care of every square inch, so that's one of my concerns.
You were given a copy of the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan, I assume?
I was, I don't have it with me or committed to memory.
Well, this particular parcel is identified as the eastern gateway, and I recall when we studied this, it was a very special parcel, because it was seen as the first potential commercial use into the node. So a lot of time was spent by our group and the consultant to come up with some actual examples. But one thing that was very much vetted, and which I obviously can't really support, is anything over two stories. We are very clear about the height here, because as Commissioner Miranda mentioned, it is, it is 100% residential. And with the exception of right here along Wooddale Valley View, there's, there's commercial uses. So it went so far as to identify even areas where we allowed greater height, maybe up to three stories, it shaded or crosshatched the borders right next to the single-family homes and said, you will step down to two. Here, there was no crosshatching. Why? Because it was very much made clear it was going to be two stories only. So I could not support anything above two stories. And by also looking at that, I would have to say certainly no variance on the north side where it borders that single-family home. So I don't know if you're asking for one, but that would not be acceptable. The public realm, I agree with Commissioner Miranda, if we're trying to activate it, it seems to me that putting parking on the first level is not the right use for it. I do support the idea of retail-commercial. I think that that is probably the best use for this area, and there was a little disappointment, I think, over the fact that Wooddale Flats was 100% residential. We do want more residential, we appreciate the different types of housing. I think you're hitting a different market, and I, that's what we, we need here in Edina. I very much liked the design of it. I think you guys did a great job in trying to take smaller parcels and give us a very unique product that we don't have here in Edina. I think you can do the same with this parcel and give us something very unique, commercially-oriented. But I don't think it can be three stories, that just is, to me, it does not even match the small area plan.
Well, you guys really seem like entrepreneurs, and that's great. I mean, you seem like people who have ideas, and you want to dive in and come up with something, and then as, as facts on the ground change, you try to be creative and think about new solutions for your situation, and I really think that's something we need more of. This plan, I think, probably can also need some more thought. I mean, there's a few concerns with it. Kind of to, perhaps paraphrasing what Commissioner Lee said, one of the key thoughts in, in the Valley View Small Area Plan, and just generally in our comprehensive plan, is, is a subject of a lot of discussion in a lot of our last year or two of meetings about the comprehensive plan, is the idea of gentle transition in height to residential areas. And I think that we really have to live with that, and to just put something that's above the small area plan in height right next to some residences is probably a non-starter. I'm really sympathetic to your parking issues, and I, I wish we could come up with solutions. My worry is that without having sufficient parking on site, though, that whatever parking is needed will spill into the neighbors and in the residential area, and that's, that's another thing that Edina generally has a concern about. So without really knowing the type of use that's going to go in, and I know in my experience, 250 was, we, you know, we were using a 250 metric in Silicon Valley, we were even down to one and a quarter of some buildings. But even to go 300, 350, probably takes, per person, probably gets you to 40 parking spaces. And I'm trying to think of uses that don't need that many parking spaces, and I don't want to delve into the uses you've spoken with, but I think of a couple. One is showroom-type use, but then you still have occasional customers visiting. And the other thing is, is a use that's very into serving the neighborhood, pedestrian, pedestrians in the neighborhood, and that probably gets you more into the retail world. You know, it's unfortunate, at, at 44th and France, there's all this quote-unquote "community" parking that could be available in the future that doesn't really exist at the Valley View Wooddale area. And if it were, I think that would really be a big help for your, for this type of project. But I, I think, I think you're going to have to think more about how to, I'd be, I'd be comfortable going above two stories on the Valley View portion, but I would, I would definitely want to have a gentle transition, so it's, when you hit, when you hit those houses to the north, that it's no higher, no taller than they are, and, and something to, just to have better certainty for the neighbors that there wouldn't be any parking in front of, you know, six, eight hours a day of park, cars parked in front of their houses. So, you know, again, you really seem like entrepreneurs, and I'm sure you'll, you'll land on something in an aha moment, but I encourage you to go back and think harder about how to make all these things, you have to balance work.
Okay, thank you.
Too much mass, not enough parking. I don't know how, you know, we can put a building that big, but it doesn't conform with the small area plan, so I'd, I'd struggle putting this project in.
I've been trying to think if I had anything else to add to what mostly everyone else said, and I guess, instead of not saying anything, I just want to echo most of the comments. For me, more than anything, the parking for the whole first level is a non-starter, as well as the graceful transition to the neighborhood. I would be fine if, you know, the first half of the building was a little taller, kind of like how New Horizon has kind of some jut-outs that go above the two stories. But definitely, as it gets to that building to the north, it has to step down. That's it.
Right, and the same, you know, the, I think losing that whole first floor to just parking, you want that activity on the street. It's too massive. I, I'm always like with Lou, you know, less parking, but this is a little frightening, too. It's a little too much, you know, I think the neighborhood would be impacted by that, so. Go.
One more comment. So it's a, it's a difficult neighborhood to build in, I think, because unlike 44th and France, which is about the same size of, it's not on a transit route. So there's so, it's kind of hard to argue that you can have, you know, a certain percentage of people using transit. And there is the E-line, which is going to replace the Six Bus, and that will either go down France or Xerxes, it won't go where the Six Bus goes now, which is occasionally, occasionally along Wooddale. So that makes the parking situation harder. And, so I think the, probably the size of the building is too large for that, for that property. But I think in general, I think, I think Edina needs to deal a little bit more with parking in front of people's houses.
Just one thing you said, and I had this conversation with our comprehensive plan consultant, too. I do think there is transit that goes on Valley View, and there's an express stop right on Wooddale and Valley View, but I also think there's, there's a stop, you know, in those Ts or whatever they look like now, like 30 feet from this intersection. So I had the same conversation with Bill. So I do, there is some transit, but probably not as extensive as 44th.
No, thank you.
Questions for us?
Thank you for the feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the final sketch plan tonight is 4388 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair members of the commission. Again, another sketch plan up in the 44th and France area, so another area of town within a small area plan. There's a look at the property at Zone PCD One, highlighted in red. This site is guided in, the small area plan is four stories, and then transitioning from three down to two as it moves to the west. This is the old, the Old Fellows Hall building. Old historic photo in the right corner. So what the applicant is proposing here is they would maintain the existing, that existing structure, but expand it. So they would build a two-story, about just under 12,000 square foot addition, with 31 underground parking stalls. So this one, they would go underneath. The existing building is just over 9,000 square feet. The proposed use here would be a child, childcare and preschool. There'd be about 130-some students and seven staff, as they've described it. So there's, again, it's just a massing diagram of the building. So here's a look at the site plan. So currently, the site access is available off of France, but you can move around to 44th Street to exit. So with this proposal, access would remain off of 44th, where you would go into the building and then underneath with the underground parking. So this parking lot to the north would become isolated. We do have some concerns, engineering staff has expressed concerns about vehicles, as you can see the angled parking here, how do they turn around and get out onto France? So the county would have to review this as well, but engineering staff has already identified that as an issue. This one, a little bit closer to code compliance, a few variances would be requested along 44th. Really, it's maintaining the existing setback, which is a zero-foot setback, but it's maintaining that from existing. And some setbacks to the north. They, based on the square footage of the uses there, the 70 parking stalls are required, 58 are proposed here, so they're, they're in the ballpark with this one. Parking study would be required along with a traffic study, should the, should the, should the applicant move forward. So again, it would be a site plan review with the parking stall variance and the building setback variances. Some of the issues that staff has identified, again, it's in that transition area along the, especially along this west lot line. As it transitions, there's a single-family home to the west. In terms of the give-to-get, they've described the underground parking, the maintaining of the existing building, and expand the enhancement of the sidewalk along the street are some of the things that the applicant has identified. I can stop there and answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well, and they'll get, go into a little more detail. I should also mention, there would be an outdoor play area for the children, and it would be over the parking structure in this location here. So part of this surface parking lot would be covered as well.
Okay, great, thank you, Carrie. Let's go on this way. Questions for Carrie? Okay, Commissioner Neraf.
Carrie, I mean, in the sketch plan, I guess we're presented with a couple of issues. One is feedback on the property itself, and then thoughts and dialogue regarding the proposed variances from code, is that a fair?
Yeah, you, not necessarily having to get into, you know, the detail of the variances and whether the hardship is met, it's really more big-picture feedback, unless they're showstoppers, kind of like the last project where the parking, you know, was so great, you know, expressed concerns that way.
Variances in terms of how they would affect the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Not in terms of, are they meeting all the tests to get a variance?
Yes, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Okay. And then along the line about, I mean, is it possible to build a project that wouldn't have, wouldn't require variances on that space?
It would be difficult.
It would be?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. All right. That's my question for you now, thanks.
I have a question. How are you, Carrie?
I'm good, got a little cold, but I'm all right.
That was it? No, I'm kidding. They, just curious, kind of big picture, we don't really see details for it, but at least in this proposal, they discuss some sort of, you know, temporary solutions while it's under construction with valet, and, you know, sometimes we don't see stuff like that. And I don't know how that might affect our decision-making. Usually, we don't even know about it, and it's just like, the neighbors have to deal with it. Is that, is that, as you see from the city's perspective, obviously, it's more proactive. Is that helpful for you guys to help support projects as well as us versus just not knowing about it?
Yeah, no, it's, it's good to address those issues if we can during construction, you know, we can put conditions on. But we're looking. know, we can put conditions on. But we're looking at it in terms of approval or denial more on, once it's finished.
Sure. I was just curious, because we don't usually see that, but it definitely helps, I think, at least assuage concerns. A lot of people have issues about construction specifically, so. Thanks.
Yes, Carrie. Yeah, the viewing you have, that's the one. So that 44th Street is, it's really the, quite a face for that project, right? So will they continue the architectural kind of scheme of the existing two-story building?
They would. Yeah, they've described it as continuing that white painted brick to match the existing building, correct?
It would appear. I mean, that's, that's going to create a, quite a nice, like I said, face or setting for...
Yeah, we're just seeing kind of the mass drawings, but that is what they've indicated.
As it, as it shows. Because that's, I mean, that's a very nice-looking building. And then, and there looks like there's a, so right there was the south elevation, so the far west end, there looks to be a tree buffer of some sort that exists separating the, that's where a single-family home is.
There is on the adjacent property. And as you note on this, on this diagram, it does sit lower than the property to the west. There's an elevation change there. So it wouldn't seem quite as, you know, that transition area, it's not quite as daunting.
Oh, so where that green is, that's the, that's the surface?
On the adjacent property, correct.
Yeah. Oh, sure. Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Carrie? Okay.
Carrie, so this building was recently sold, and this truly is an addition. So the existing building is owned by this, this is the applicant, and they want to extend it. Okay. And all the functions of the current building are expected to stay, whatever they are, retail and office as-is. Okay. And then the addition, as they have described, what the new uses are. Okay, thank you.
One further question. And it'll, it'll come up, but when we helped kind of work on and develop the small area plan, you know, there's this natural, I guess, lay of the land that works well with any type of height that goes in there, just because it's automatically buried into the slope. And, you know, I think even in the drawing, we noted at two to three stories, you know, and it shows each of the properties kind of separate. So is this technically two separate properties? See, the top is two slash three?
Held in one ownership, correct?
Okay. Okay. And, I mean, the two to three that we had in mind was similar to the Wooddale Valley View, where, you know, this addition could have three stories but would transition down to two. So just, just wanted to, we got that right, correct?
It looks like the driveway is, would come out where the alley is behind the other buildings further south on France. Is that true? Trying to judge it from the existing property. So the driveway would come out where there's a row of parking right now?
Oh, correct, yes.
So it would come across right, kind of right there. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Now the opportunity for the applicant to come up and present.
Hi, my name is John Gross. Thank you, commissioners, for letting us present. I'm one of the owners, along with Andrew Comers, and Dan Pellon, our architect, will present the project. We'll sit here and then be ready for any questions. Thanks.
My name is Dan Pellon, and I live at 1501 Fourth Avenue South. Thank you. Hello, I'm Dan Pellon from Tushy Montgomery Architects in Richfield. I live at 101 South Fifth Street, 1502 Apartment, Minneapolis, Minnesota. The proposal before you, as Carrie explained, is a two-story building next to an existing two-story building, but because of the grade, the grade change from 44th from France Avenue to the, to the west, the building will appear as a one-story building next to the existing residence. And the parking will still be below, the parking will still be below the, the property on the north also, because there's a high, high retaining wall on both sides of that property. So the parking is below the residences next to it. And then the playground over the other parking lot in the back will actually be just a little bit higher than the, than the grades around there. So there'll be a natural buffer for protection and security of the children that will be using that space. The architecture is going to be very similar to what the existing building is, except that it will have a flat roof, which I think will also make sure that the building doesn't, doesn't appear that tall next to the building to the west. We do have a couple different options of getting the parking so that there isn't a dead end on that, that surface parking lot. One is a turnaround, or one is an additional, additional entrance. I guess we don't have pointers here. Entrance out, out the west side.
We also brought enough that we could actually hand out.
Yeah, actually, we got a newer one that actually has a, has a driveway that will come through here, and then out, then come through here on the, underneath the building, and then come out here on 44th. So that this would become a one-way traffic. So then, so then they, you don't have to make sure that somebody doesn't back out on the France Avenue, or that they get to the end of the parking lot and there's nowhere to turn around, so then they can come back.
You can describe it now on the overhead?
Yeah. So I can see right here, the driveway here, this is, this is one-way traffic. And then there'd be traffic going down into the garage, and then traffic coming up. So there'd be two lanes coming out and one lane coming, going in. And from France Avenue, it would be a one-way in. And as, the existing tenant has a, has a high-end salon there, kids, kids clothing store, and sort of a co-working space. And the new tenant would be a daycare, a daycare user, which obviously, as you know, with our, our parking variance, a lot of those, a lot of those people are just being dropped off and people are leaving. The users there aren't, are not driving very much. And I guess, any questions on the, on the site plan design?
All right, we have questions for the applicant. Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, so, so this is a, I'm sorry, this is a just a daycare, or is it something else, too?
Montessori. So this, the intent for the addition is a, I don't know exactly what this is called, but kind of zero to five-year-old preschool education in there.
Okay, so I mean, would it have a standard start time? That you would have a whole bunch of people coming at the same time to drop off their kids, or?
I apologize. I don't know exactly how it works with early education. And my guess is that people drop off slightly different hours, because, you know, it depends on when they're going to work and everything else, and it's not, I don't know exactly that, but we can find an answer for you.
Okay. I mean, just because I, there's a school at the end of our block where they, they have a Montessori school, and there's this huge line of cars, you know, every morning waiting to get in. I'm just wondering how that's going to work on 44th and France.
Sure. My guess is that parents will likely go down into the parking garage. Dan, have you shown the parking garage underneath? If you could show that. Because it's tempered, there's an elevator there. It's easier maybe to, you know, deal with if you have a little kid and a slightly bigger kid, not be out on the street, but be down there and then just take the elevator up into the space. And the other thing that occurred when we created that driveline, because we were, we had gotten comments back early from Carrie saying there's a concern about backing onto France, so he said, can we now make that a one-way loop, is that we also now have more relief from the property next door to the west, and that becomes a green roof on that side, too, getting that, a little bit of buffer, which I think, on what page does that show that, Dan? There we go. So on that overhead, so now there's, the green roof is slightly bigger in the back, and then it comes around to the side. There, the area that would be used for playground would not be the entire thing, but the intent is then, on the side that's to the west, we can have, you know, plants and trees and that thing, and just kind of have this kind of really graceful transition to what would appear to be that last story.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say that this seems very well thought out, and it's very clear you read the small area plan. It seems like a lot of the elements in this really capture the spirit that we tried to kind of preserve and enhance in the area. I think you've just done a really good job. Certain characteristics, I mean, just so other people know, this specific parking lot was identified as a potential for change, and pretty obvious, because it was sunk down in on two sides with the tall retaining wall. And we don't want to just see open parking, and we want to move toward a district parking. So I think to address some of the under-parking concerns, I mean, it's pretty dang close, maybe 12 spots. And again, this is now like the third or fourth development that we've seen before the city has even started to address the district parking we want to see. So that is one area that I'm very comfortable with making a sacrifice for the, the total of the area, of the whole small area, is to be a little underparked, because that's really what we want to see. So having a green roof, I mean, as, you know, you're neighboring up to a green roof that's kind of at grade, you're maintaining the character of the existing building. I think everything that you're doing about this is great, and obviously catering to a lack of service in the area with a preschool or early childhood education center. I'm just a huge fan of everything that's going on here. I was trying to be devil's advocate to a lot of stuff, but just falling short. You guys did a really good job.
Thank you. You have good staff, and good architect helps. It's fantastic. One thing, I believe you had asked about the valet parking, too, and that we would absolutely have, even if it weren't required, because we have Sloans on the main level, and we'll have the Riveter or Co-Working Space on the second floor, and want to make sure that they're fully covered. So we're already making arrangements for that if this should go forward.
I guess one, one other thought, because that reminded me of the existing building. You know, it doesn't look like it used to, because you guys, it was painted and redone. So is a thought to kind of make this look like an addition to that, or is it also to make it look a little different? And I just say that because the character in the area is kind of close, different-looking building. So as much as an extension of that one would look nice, I think some varied architecture or elements would actually complement it better.
Yeah, it's an interesting challenge, but a fun one. If you look on the Goodnight Moon side, when you come and go into that parking lot, it has a very European feel. It's white stucco with multi-pane windows and arch. And then the other side has sort of a European feel. That was the idea of getting it white. So to kind of balance with that, even if it's not exactly brick, if it is stucco or something, we want to come back with, it has a kind of a European feel, and feels appropriate next to the existing one, and complements it. Yes.
So I echo much of what Jimmy said. I think overall, this fits in really well. And just as a reminder to everybody, one of the things that we would hope for is to, you know, engage the street more. And so instead of seeing a flat lot, here you've got a building right on the sidewalk, which is exactly what we're looking for. And then the parking is more or less hidden behind, and even better, much of it'll be underground. Hopefully, you know, soon we will have that community parking, but until then, this is great. The other thing is, I think the proposed uses are really interesting. The co-working and then the Montessori and Sloans are really great additions to the neighborhood and will add a lot of vibrancy, which should also, you know, give France 44 and, you know, some of the other restaurants around there, you know, they'll, they'll, their little restaurant area, will give them some business and will just multiply the vibrancy. So I really applaud that. My biggest concern with this is the impact on the neighbor to the, to the west. We had talked about what could go there, and as has already been brought up, we even thought, well, even, even three stories, because you've really got almost a story and a half of coverage, because it's so deep, that retaining wall is so high. So it looks like, from the diagrams, that you're, you're really, you know, the visibility might be, what, like 10 feet or something? And then with the flat roof, you know, that mitigates any concern there. So I think actually you've done a really good job, and, you know, then having the green space on top, and how cool to have the kids' playground on top. So really nice design. And I appreciate the landscaping on the, you know, the sidewalk area. One of the concerns, I guess, you know, you've addressed much of the, the parking as the cars come through, you know, if they're going to enter from France and drive west and then exit on 44th. So the only concern there is that in certain times of the day, that could be kind of hazardous to people on the sidewalk. So just being really mindful of how you address that, whether it's speed bumps or, because that would be a big concern.
You're right. And thinking about that, and kind of picturing it, as you said, there might be a way to hold back that wall just a little bit, so the car coming around the edge has a visual of the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, because hopefully that sidewalk gets, you know, really engaged with people going to the co-work space and dropping off the kids, because they can walk there or whatever. So that would be the only thing. And how many kids are you thinking that would be in this space? It's not that big a space.
136.
136, yeah.
Oh. So that's, that's kind of a concern, because that's potentially 136 cars that are probably going to go through between 7:30 and 9:00. And West 44th already is kind of crazy. So I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that would be my concern.
One potential thought there is, you know, that those hours are before Sloans is open and things are happening. So maybe to talk to the childcare and say there's a rear access, if people coming off of France, so you can enter there, and then there's the one that's off of 44, so other parents can go down there and come back up, just to ease that up a little bit.
I would imagine that's going to be one of the biggest concerns, is the traffic, because traffic there is already a concern, because so many people use that street as the through street, 44th. And France, we know, is busy. But overall, I think they would be, the proposed uses are, would be great additions to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
If you cater to families with triplets, perhaps there'd be fewer cars. I think it's a nice project that does a lot of improvements. Just to be really brief, my, I only really have one concern about, and that's the setbacks to the north and the west. I wish you were a little farther away from the neighbors. You know, I don't think you necessarily need to be 28 feet, but it'd be good to see something, a little more clearance. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think this is a really interesting project. Is there any plan to sort of restore the finishes on the the finishes on the existing building? Are you planning to do anything with that?
You mean, so we painted it, do you mean the, like, the lighting and things?
Yeah, just the exterior. Are you going to upgrade the exterior? Or you said you recently painted it, so.
So, yeah, it used to be brick colored and there were two different colors of brick. They weren't matching brick. And so we wanted to kind of tie it in again, try to go for a little bit more European feel.
Yep.
I think when the, the Riveter then joins, they'll take that last little space on the main floor and then go upstairs. Their awnings will kind of complete the look a little bit. And then we'll address with Sloans and with them about changing lights and doing things. So they're incredible tenants. And so it's kind of working with them and they all have
Yeah.
good ideas and want, you know, an incredible exterior. And so we're totally open to what they want that the city allows.
Sure. Well, I would say, again, go for something iconic. I think that you could make this really playful with the idea that now that there are actually younger, younger people involved in that building. I was even looking at your elevation here. Maybe there's a way, I love that hip roof of the original building. Maybe you put a little token hip roof up on that elevator stack or over the mechanical thing and, you know, and sort of mimic that. But those kinds of touches, I think, I think it would be wise to mimic the original building in terms of scale, rhythm, material and color. I think that, that it just lends a continuity to that whole thing. And I think that's what you're after. I just wanted to ask about the wood fence. What kind of wood is that? And what kind of wood are you seeing? Or wood seems like a not so permanent material, but you might have something specific in mind. So I thought I'd ask.
It'd be more of a Trex type. You, you can get the, the fence in the, in the Trex type thing.
Okay. Well, because there's so much of it, I'd say explore what possibilities there are. I know you want something durable.
There's a lot of patterns you can do in two.
Yeah, exactly. And I know, I know metal fencing can be, you know, hard to maintain sometimes, but there's some great aluminum materials out there now. So, or maybe alternate different kinds of perforated panels with, with, with some posts or something.
Yeah.
But you've got so much of it. And again, that can play a part in your sort of playfulness of expression of the building. So I, I do think it's a great project. So it's glad, glad to see that you took advantage of, of the site and are following the small area plan guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to compliment the fact that the Sloan Beauty Bar has transparent windows unlike the, there's another hair place across the street that has translucent windows. And I think that kind of ruins any kind of street feel or ability to, to see in. And I think that makes a big difference. So I think that's really good. But that brings up the point that I've also seen daycare centers where they like have the blinds closed all day for privacy or whatever reason. Have you thought about, you know, what the look to the street is going to be on, on the 44th side of the building?
Well, the intent is that it's just as kind of welcoming, inviting, opens people in. I, I don't know what their protocol is and we can certainly discuss that, find that out and answer that.
Because I think that would be very important because if it's, you know, it totally detracts from the, from the street feel if, if it's got blinds closed all day.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
There's plenty of one-way glass that they can use now.
Okay, Jimmy?
Just one other thing comes to mind, just about the parking. Because we haven't totally think about it, but you know, this addition and kind of the parking for, replaces all the parking that's usually pretty full during the day. So again, just be ready to kind of address, like you mentioned already, but just the times. I think that's going to become even more important than other developments. Just making sure that if you are underparked, that there's ways to build that into the use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, well, I echo what's been said. I think this is exciting. I'm also a little concerned with the parking. So just be ready to present that because yeah, because even since Sloans opened up, that the whole street is just really parked on both sides now and it's hard to get through there and there's people crossing. So but it's also kind of just getting to the, you know, Jimmy and Sheila, Jimmy and Sheila, the district parking. I just, I think it just kind of gets us to the, we're seeing the development around here and we do want to have that. And Kerry, you know, how do we keep pushing the city to do something or take, because I don't know why I was thinking that this was maybe even a potential for some of that district parking. But, you know, anyway, just as we look at this, I know it's not all on your shoulders, but we are eating up parking and we're always, you know, you know, saying bravo to that, but we have to resolve it somehow. So I think that we're kind of reaching that point where it's, it's kind of reached the max where the parking, even on street, it's not available. And so I just think as we, as this progresses, we need to, you know, keep seeing how, how the city or how we can look at that district parking.
Yeah. In this one, we are increasing the total number of parking over what we have now. And, you know, I wish we could have even more, but that's sort of where we top out. But the other thing that's about Sloans and the traffic there or the parking now is I would say we still have about anywhere from any given time, you know, seven to 15 contractors parking in there because they're working on the second floor.
Oh, okay.
You know, Sloans opened, it was originally, there are contractors now, as they're open, the other contractors have finished up that space. So that should be done soon and then we'll kind of really see what we have.
Okay. Yeah, it just seemed like all of a sudden, boom, it was just, okay. Okay. Any other comments?
Well, I guess this is a message, it's a message for the city as it is for the developers, but somebody mentioned, I forget who now, you know, there's parking up and down 44th, which, you know, makes it hard to get through, but it actually slows traffic down, which I think is actually a good thing. And I think the city needs to think about potentially charging for parking on the street, you know, on the block adjacent there just to get, to try to get people to think about not parking there. And the thing is, this is a little bit early before we know whether the E-line is going to go there. It might go along 44th and France, in which case that would be another way to, to have fewer people parking there. It may go along Xerxes. We won't know for a few months which way it's going to go. So that, that's kind of neither here nor there. But we need to think about the transit too, as we think about this. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next is commission procedures and devices. Was MJ going to present or?
She wasn't.
Okay.
So this is one we've talked a little bit about the past, in the past, where we're wanting to get rid of the paper. So we'd like to roll it out in July. So what we'd real, and most of, in fact, I think the vast majority of you have let us know whether you would like a device or not. So this is, is really just a plea to let us know if you would like one or not.
And what, what, what is this?
It's an iPad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the, the specs on it yet, but.
Do we have to, do we have to specifically, I know it was let MJ know. And I remember I responded to that email. Great. I'm all for it and I'll let MJ know, but I did not do that. Is this, can we, is, do we have to directly let her know?
You can let me know and I can, I believe six of you have, so.
Okay. So I'm on to sign me up too.
Okay. Okay. I think we're good then. We will roll that out. And there'll be training and we'll go through all of that. But so more to come.
And we can still pick up a paper copy of things if we want.
You most certainly can.
Okay, great.
Great. So correspondents petitions, chair and member comments, any others?
Just to let everyone know.
All right.
Yeah. Hey, look at this. Woo!
That is nice.
Yeah. Yeah. So Sheila and I were presented this. We also represent the Small Area Plan Working Group and all of the neighbors of the 44th and France small area. But that was last night. There's an annual Heritage Award that is bestowed in Edina and it went to the Small Area Plan. So it's kind of fitting that there was a nice sketch plan tonight that really does kind of meet the spirit of why we got this. So it's kind of cool to see things come full circle and we got some gratitude and recognition for the stuff we do. So it does happen, guys. It does happen. Yeah. You have anything to say?
You said it all.
All right.
And you gave a, you gave a nice little, I know you were kind of on the spot, but you gave a, Sheila looked great holding it and Jimmy did a great job, you know?
Yeah. I mean, just to reiterate the, you know, some of the things we said. I mean, it really, you know, was a huge learning process for us, but you know, the key word was process. And I think, you know, it would, we needed time as a community in that area to really come together and build consensus. And it got messy at times, but that's good. Conflict's good. No one had the right answer right away. But it was that process of coming together. So like, yeah, there's value in that final document, but a lot of the heavy lifting should change like this come has already occurred. And it's cool to just get recognition over that. And, you know, we all kind of served on some small area plans and it's a really good thing that we've done for the community and.
Yeah. It's nice to get recognized. At times the, the days were long, but overall it ended up, it ended up good.
Yeah. So we're going to temporarily drill this onto the cleaners building for, you know, it's kind of a, so the whole community can celebrate it.
There is no more cleaners building.
I was just, I was, Jimmy's also made comments at the council agenda item about Amundson Flats and basically is sort of explaining his dissent from the commission. I, I thought that was a good, that was a pretty good lesson for, that I think that that might be something members to consider. The, the, the council, I think it registered and, and that was your point. Let's not forget this. And I think it did underscore and captured, you know, what the feeling of the commission was on the, on the project, but the concerns. And I think that did underscore that a lot. That was a good, that was a good follow-up.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah. So I just want to say that I, I met this wonderful woman the other day. I was down at Wooddale and Valley View and I was going to someplace, what's that?
Met this wonderful woman.
Oh. And, that's funny. No, so, no, she was riding this, this tricycle and she, she had a package thing on the back and, and she had. And so she, she lived in the area and she was explaining why she liked it so much and how it was really useful for her. And, and so she didn't drive to Wooddale and Valley View. She rode her bike there, you know? And she was a, my age or older, you know? So, you know, she still rode her bike and she said it was very heavy compared to a regular bike. And that's why she doesn't do hills, but she, she lived more than a few blocks away. So I thought it was really interesting. And then in terms of the E-line, there was meetings Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, just open shows to explain what's going on with it. Nothing new has changed. I don't think, it's been, I skipped the last announcement. So I forget if we had a meeting since then, but basically they're deciding between, on the south end, they're deciding between where it goes down, if it goes down, all the way down Xerxes, all the way down France, or if it cuts over at 50th Street and, and goes from Xerxes to France. So that still hasn't been decided. It'll be probably the end of the summer when that's decided. But of course, well, I don't know. I mean, I'm rooting for France because I live near 44th and France. But if they do go along 44th and France, they'll have to take away parking on one side on 44th in, in Minneapolis and order to have the buses because they're all articulated buses. They're all large buses. But anyway, that's coming along nicely and that should be done around the same time that the Southwest Light Rail is done. So 2023.
We say like, hey, the E-line, you know, goes forth and it goes down 44th and France and we have more larger buses going there more frequently. What type of programs can the city do to also communicate that and help train people to do things differently? I just think of the bicycle plan that we saw, you know, it wasn't just, hey, build bike lanes. There was five other components to actually get people to now use it and change kind of their lifestyle. So I didn't know if there's parts of, you know, these changes, you know, when we add a new line, is there something the city can do to tap into resources to help make it easier for people to know about things or, you know, as simple as train, you know, do, I mean, people have ridden a bus, but maybe it's been a while and it's not as big of a deal. I, I don't know. I'm just curious.
Yeah. In terms of outreach and that sort of thing, I'm not sure. I mean, it's far enough away. Yeah. I'm not sure what they're, what they're going to do. I know.
Just historically, if they have done things in the past, like the circulator, could they do more things?
Oh, right, right. I'm sure the city itself could do something. Metro Transit, I mean, a lot of that's in flux right now because, well, the stations are going to be different. You're going to pay beforehand. I mean, they'll probably do something. I guess I don't know what they've done with the A-line in St. Paul, but, which is the same sort of thing. I'm not sure how they reach out to the community. But I mean, we have neighborhood groups now that can work through them. I've already had our local neighborhood group, Morningside Neighborhood Association, post some of the flyers about how things are changing, what, what the pay stations will be like and how the stations will be set up and there's bike parking and that sort of thing. I know one of the concerns, because I'm on the Community Advisory Committee, and one of the concerns from other members of the committee, including one person who has vision loss, is that Edina doesn't currently have sidewalks along France, especially south of 50th Street. And so I know, but I know it's on our, on our bike and pedestrian plan to have sidewalks along that area. And I know along 54th Street and 58th Street, well, 54th Street, they're putting a minute and 58th, they're planning to have sidewalks going east and west. So infrastructure wise, the city needs to do things too in order to prepare it. Because you don't, you don't want stations that you can't get to, right, that you have to drive to. Kind of negates the whole point. So there's definitely stuff. And, and our city transportation planner, Andrea Schabione, is, is on the program committee for that. So they'll be in contact.
So in our comprehensive plan, I know in the 50th France smaller plan, some of the issues we dealt with, density, traffic, parking, land, cost of land and a few other issues. If you just want to see how someone else is facing the same issues, I don't know if you read the article about Grand Avenue in the Star Tribune this week in the comments. You might just want, they're wrestling with the same issues even more and we're, we're not alone. So if you, if you have time, you want to, you know, check it out.
You, you reminded me of one thing and this will be quick. I, you know, I read just this last week that what is, has been called the Southdale Library will now actually move to Southdale and it's going to take the Herberger space. And it made me think about how lucky we are that, you know, here we have this, what's becoming this big shell of retail, empty retail. And we're really fortunate. We live in a community where we've got things going in there. So we'll have the Hennepin County Center, we'll have the Southdale Library, we'll have that huge lifetime, which will add so much vibrancy to that area. And I'm, I'm just feel like we're really fortunate. So I wasn't sure that everybody had seen that, but I think it was a great decision.
Seems like it's possible. It may be the solution, but that could box me too.
I think we've, we've filled.
Take advantage of those.
Right, right. You fill up a lot of space with those services and, and things that everybody uses.
Sorry, one more, just quick thing. I handed out this evening some correspondence from Excel. You recall when we reviewed the Amundson site? We had sent them the plans, but the address was right, but it didn't get to the specific division. And so they've reviewed the plans. They didn't have any issues with it. It didn't impact their lines. But just moving forward, she had suggested in the email some tweaks to the plan. And we've got a specific person now that we can contact and email. We, I guess my point is we can make those edits to the plan. It shouldn't be any, any problem. problem.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.